Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Thursday, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty four council meeting for the community of the year. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen, Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Miskin.
Here.
Mayor Abou Osley.
Here.
Ms. Menzer.
Here.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Sterned.
Here.
Thank you. This time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, there's a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any item that is listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. I'll review very briefly some of the rules for a public forum comments. This, this public forum is for topics that are on the agenda but not part of, part of a public hearing. There will be another public forum at the end of the meeting. We are asked to please complete the yellow comment card at the end of the staff table and turn it into the city clerk. Please do not approach the dais. Please submit materials that you'd like to submit to the council, submit them to the city clerk. And please limit comments to five minutes. And the rest of the rules are shown on the screens. Thank you. Is there anyone here to address counsel on any topic that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing? Please come forward. Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A one through G one, resolutions three one eight, five one through three one eight, six zero.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A one through G one, resolutions three one eight, five one through three one eight, six zero. Discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. For the next part of the meeting, I'll turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osley's abstention as follows. Item A one, resolution number three one eight, six one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item A one, resolution three one eight, six one, a resolution amending, resolution amending resolution three one seven, five one, and approving a settlement agreement with Iowa Community Assurances Pool, Delaney Concrete Construction Company, Inc., Knapp Warden, LLC, Anxiety Construction Company, and Merchants Bonding Company relating to the new public services facility. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. With that, it's back to the mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty four dash zero four, designated in the area of Marion, Iowa, as the two thousand and twenty four multifamily housing urban revitalization area.
Second.
The initial consideration.
Sorry, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the initial consideration of ordinance number twenty four dash zero four, designating the two thousand and twenty four multifamily housing urban revitalization area. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty four dash zero four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding the two thousand and twenty four Draper Park project. We have a presentation. The city engineer and parks director.
Yep. So this is the Draper Park over by the Legion. So this does have a start date of five twenty eight, twenty four, completion date of ten four, twenty four, liquidated damages of three hundred dollars per day. We did receive three bids for this project, the low bid from Rachi Construction at two eighty nine and a half, which was seventy three point four percent of the engineer's estimate. And then the actual project plan, I got Seth up here to kind of walk through that schematic.
So I just wanted to bring forward just kind of an update on, I know we've presented the conceptials and we've been working with the steering committee on getting a construction design in for it. And so just from the picture, just want to provide some of the updates that are, that, that are happening between conceptual and the construction design. So here's the picture, the wonderful picture that everyone's familiar with, with Draper Park. And some of those changes that we are included that came from the committee was adding lighting to the trail system and uplighting to the caboose. So we can have the, from the security standpoint, but also the aesthetics during nighttime, electrical for, in fiber for security cameras. And then also we changed the location of the crossing signal from, that is pretty loud and very vibrant, so moving it away from the road to the backside, so it's not a distraction. And then also just updates to the overall landscaping of the project. And so here's kind of some of the, don't have a conceptual, the construction design, but just kind of showing you a little bit of, of, of some of those high level changes. And going back to the picture, so you can kind of visualize an overview that, you know, a lot of the changes will have pedestal lighting along the trail system to really enhance it. We're moving the, the, the signal actually from that location to the other location located on the east side of the, the switch. And then the landscaping, we're actually going to engulf the, around the caboose completely with perennials in, enhanced plantings around that. And include uplighting to help with security for that, the park. We'll have some continued conversations when we're working with it. We're continuing to talk to the Legion, so we're good neighbors. So we can add parking over there and work to some sort of agreement to allow for that activity. And then we're working with people in the committee too, to help us along with the, we have people on the committee that helps us with the signal. And then also with some of the educational components that we're doing for the park. So any questions on any of the updates?
We'll come back to questions after the public hearing.
Absolutely.
Stick around. Thanks. Public hearing is now open. If there's anyone here to address counsel, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Okay, seeing that no one's coming forward, we'll first ask, have we received any comments outside the meeting?
I have not received any.
And done from, from the departments? Okay. We'll close the public hearing and proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the project calendar regarding the two thousand and twenty four Draper Park project as follows. This will be resolutions three one eight, six two through three one eight, six three.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the two thousand and twenty four Draper Park project, including resolutions three one eight, six two and three one eight, six three. Discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, so Seth, a question, actually two questions. Do you anticipate then, when the active construction on this is going to be done, that that segment of the trail will have to be closed down?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we'll, we'll have communications go along with that, so.
Okay, but that, that'll be a defined period at the right time, so.
Yes.
Okay, and then I know you had shown us some visuals on the caboose rebuild a couple of months ago. How's that going?
So it is over to Alba to, for, for painting right now. And so whenever, whenever it gets done there, it will sit on the Webtech site until we're ready to move it to its permanent home, so.
Okay, so that's close.
It is.
Okay, great, thanks.
Seth, on the, on the drawing, like, it doesn't show like a sidewalk connection to the parking lot. Is there going to be one or not?
So our thought process was not to do that quite yet. If we start seeing like a cow path created, then we're kind of going on that practice. But we're kind of wanting to see what people's behaviors are like between the parking lot and that. So if, if we start seeing a cow path, we're definitely, we can, that's something we can do at house to create that connection between the parking, parking lot and the site, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say again, thank you for all the work, the, 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 the naming of the park. It's just, as we sit here and think of, of Mr. Draper in his past, this is still yet a very rewarding park for us and for an individual in our community. So as we kind of witness and watch our, our depot pavilion be somewhat stripped a little bit, and we know the excitement of the rebuild of that. Paul was very, very passionate about that, and for those of us that had the opportunity to serve with him, what a wonderful opportunity. So I just wanted to say thanks again for all those efforts and work and super excited for this new project up on that part of the town.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing on the two thousand and twenty four HMA resurfacing project. Report.
Yeah, so this project, the following streets are being overlaid. Thirty first Street from Tenth Avenue to McGowan Boulevard, Eleventh Street from First Avenue to Fifth Avenue, Third Avenue from Eleventh Street to Twelfth Street, Twenty first Avenue from Twenty fourth Street to Gulfview Court, Twenty third Avenue from Twenty fourth Street to Twenty sixth Street, Twenty sixth Avenue from Twenty fourth Street to Twenty seventh Street. For this, we got one bid from Pelling. That was nine hundred ninety eight thousand, nine hundred fifty nine dollars and twenty cents, which was one hundred point three percent of the engineer's estimate, under the million dollar budget that we have. Has a completion date of nine twenty seven, twenty four, with three hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages. And we are recommending that we proceed with the plans and bids.
Okay, thank you, Mike. If there's anyone here to address counsel, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. The public hearing is currently open. Please come forward. Okay, seeing that no one is coming forward, we'll ask if there were comments received outside the meeting?
No.
I have not received any.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing, proceed to the motion. For that part, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the project calendar regarding the two thousand and twenty four HMA resurfacing project as follows. Resolutions numbers three one eight, six four through three one eight, six five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the project calendar regarding the two thousand and twenty four HMA resurfacing project as follows. Resolutions three one eight, six four through three one eight, six five. Discussion.
Yes, Your Honor. Mike, maybe I missed this in the packet. What's the start date for this work? I know you had a completion.
Yeah, so they just have a completion date.
Okay.
They, they can show up whenever their plan opens and they're ready to proceed, so they'll get a game plan put together.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other discussion? Questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the project calendar regarding two thousand and twenty four HMA resurfacing project. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. And motion carries with one abstention.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing regarding amendment to chapter one sixty three of the Code of Ordinances related to flood damage prevention and adoption of the two thousand and twenty four FEMA flood insurance study and the two thousand and twenty four FEMA flood insurance rate map.
Yeah, so this, the FEMA board only studied portions of Indian Creek and a portion of Dry Creek. With that, we had the, the, the appeal that we did for the two areas. They did accept our appeal. So with the Box Culvered and with the, the fill that was occurring off of Winslow Road. So with that, in order to stay in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, we have to adopt the new maps, the new ordinance. There are a few things that we'll talk about when we get to the actual ordinance and we'll walk through, but for the public hearing, we are recommending move forward with this. We do have eighty three properties in the city of Marion that do have flood insurance to the National Flood Insurance Program. So we want to make sure they can keep at that rate and not have to go at a higher rate going to the private side.
Okay, public hearing is now open. If anyone is here to address counsel, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Okay, seeing that no one is coming forward, we'll ask if any comments were received outside the meeting to staff?
I have not received any.
Mike?
No.
None? Okay. Note that for the record, and we'll close the public hearing, proceed to the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty four dash oh five, adopting amendments to chapter one hundred and sixty three of the Code of Ordinances relating to flood damage prevention, the two thousand and twenty four FEMA flood insurance study and the two thousand and twenty four FEMA flood insurance rate map. This is the initial consideration.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty four dash zero five, adopting amendments to chapter one sixty three of the Code of Ordinances related to flood damage prevention, the two thousand and twenty four FEMA flood insurance study and the two thousand and twenty four FEMA flood insurance rate map. Any discussion?
Yeah, so just a couple of things I want to walk you through. So one of the big changes that we're doing, we took this completely out of the zoning code. So if you remember, it was maybe a month ago, we actually took that other section, maybe it was four oh three, completely out of the code section. So it was in there twice when we recodified. So what we're doing is anything in here that related to zoning board of adjustment instead goes to city council. So if somebody applies for a flood permit and I deny them, they have to have some other means. So the, their next course of action, if I denied them that permit, would come to city council. Not only do they have to get city council to approve that variance, but they also have to have to have the DNR or FEMA also approve that. So I've never denied one in my career, but you never know. The other thing that I want to talk through is it's basically a ten year period clause that's in there twice. So let's say somebody gets flooded one year and they have less than fifty percent of their property is damaged for the flood insurance. They don't have to get bought out. They can actually make repairs, leave it where they're at. What this would do, if we added the ten year clause, let's say first year they get flooded, they have forty eight percent damage. Then two years down the road, they get three percent damage. They're over that fifty percent. So then they get bought out by FEMA. So we have eighty three properties in the city that have flood insurance that FEMA released to us doing an information request to them. But we don't know of any properties that have had repeated loss. I can tell you with the, the new flood insurance maps, that we do have like areas at the base flood elevation of the one hundred year flood plane has actually raised by three feet. But it is not my recommendation to add the ten year clause in there at this time, but if that's something the city council wants us to leave in there, we can, because right now listed in there is optional language.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mike, Mike, can you just, for the benefit of everyone listening, can you explain the fifty percent rule? Is that value of dwelling or is that square footage of value? Can you just outline that just very briefly?
Yep, so it's fifty percent of the market value of the structure before damage occurred.
Thank you.
Okay, great, go ahead.
Yeah, Mike, you mentioned that FEMA or DNR would be involved for basically petitioning if we had a denial. Is that before or after counsel would act on, on this?
They don't specify that, but they say, so it says, the city council shall hear and decide all applicants for deviations in accordance with this chapter. And then just says variances from the terms of the chapter must meet the following standards. And number one is all variances, as granted, must have concurrence or approval of the Department of Natural Resources. So it doesn't necessarily say which has to happen prior, but they have to have both before it can.
And, and so that would be on the applicant's work list or actions to go to DNR?
Yes.
To close that out?
If I was to actually deny someone, I would say, here's your denial, here's your process for how you proceed forward.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
I didn't hear if we wanted to keep the ten year. I assume you want to go with staff's recommendation, not put ten year.
Your recommendation is to not have the ten year?
Right.
Is any, anyone opposed to that?
Not opposed.
Okay, so our vote to approve this would include removing the ten year?
Yep.
Okay, so is that clear for everyone? All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty four dash zero five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we have a public forum, time set aside for comments from members of the public. If anyone's here to address counsel, please step forward. State your name and address.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me today, guys. With all due respect, I'll be exercising my Fourth Amendment right under the United States Constitution. Today, I'm here to talk to you guys about a issue that I think any person can relate to. Even if you back the blue and you like the police, it's about protecting children from predators, guys, and qualified immunity and covering people's crimes up. It, it's okay when it's a victimless crime, but when it's this type of crime, guys, it, it says something completely horrible about our justice system, that the people with the cameras are doing thirty days in jail, while the people that do sexual offenses to children don't go to jail at all. I'm going to read you an article. It is out of the Cedar Rapids Gazette. It was written by Trish Mecaffey on June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty one. It was updated June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty one, and this is an article that's been buried, guys. I've been down to the courthouse to get information, everything sealed. This article's been deleted off the internet because somebody doesn't want people to see this. I'm going to read this article word for word. An eighteen year old man pleaded guilty this week to possessing more than two thousand photos and videos of child pornography in two thousand and nineteen. Brody Thomas Hartwig originally charged with two counts of sexual exploitation of a minor pleaded to one of the charges. According to court documents, the other charge was dismissed as part of a plea agreement. A criminal complaint stated Hartwig possessed the photos and videos in his email accounts. Sixth Judicial Associate District Judge Angie Johnson sentenced Hartwig on Wednesday to two years of supervised probation and gave him a deferred judgment. That means if he has no further violations and complies with conditions set by his probation officer, his conviction will be expunged when he completes his probation. Johnson also ordered Hartwig, the son of a Marion, Iowa, police officer, to register as a sex offender and, and serve a special sentence of parole for ten years as a result of his conviction. Hartwig was initially charged last year in Lynn County Juvenile Court because he was seventeen at the time. He was waived into district court, adult court in November. Both the prosecutor and Hartwig's attorney agreed it would be in the best interest of the teen and the community to send his case to district court according to Scott's ruling. First Assistant Lynn County Attorney Nick Maybank said, sometimes federal prosecutors takes over sex exploitation and child pornography cases, but not all the time. He didn't know if the case, if it came up in this case or not. Maybanks and Lynn County Attorney Jerry Vander Sanden both acknowledged that Iowa law allows the office to withdraw from a criminal case that is a legal conflict of interest. The fact we may be prosecuting the relative of a peace officer does not present a legal conflict of interest for our office, Vander Sanden said. It is for the same reason we do not withdraw from a case where there is a peace officer is a victim. The recent case involving Stanley Donahue, charged with fatally shooting a sheriff's deputy is a good example. Vander Sanden also said they would also withdraw and ask for an independent prosecutor if an employee or immediate relative of an employee of the office was charged with the crime. Hartwig has no other charges in district court, but in March, District Chief Lars Anderson issued a sexual abuse protective order against Hartwig for a minor. There is no indication if the order was related to the child pornography case. The case was prosecuted by Assistant Lynn County Attorney Laurie Craig and investigated by the Cedar Rapids Iowa Police Department. Now, once again, guys, this happened in two thousand and nineteen. At the same time in two thousand and nineteen, I'll be giving you guys the paperwork so you can look it over. There is also a lawsuit that claims sexual harassment and threats at the Marion Iowa Police Department. Now, that's also in two thousand and nineteen. The, the common denominator, guys, is Jeff D. Hartwig of the Marion Iowa Police Department. He's got sexual problems going on at work, sexual problems going on at home, and you guys mentioned liberty and justice for all. The problem is, guys, is that if I had gotten caught with this, you know I would go to jail. No, no questions asked. If I even had this inside of my house, if my roommate had this, you know I would go to jail. I'd get the living crap beaten out of me, and then my poster would be pictured, I'd be posted all over Iowa. But when a family member of a police officer does this, it's perfectly fine. You know, we'll just let him go outside, target more children. That's perfectly fine. But the person that says a cuss word, we're going to lock him up into Lynn County Jail. That is completely un-American, guys. And it is just such a double standard, the way that police officers are treated and the way that regular citizens are treated. And this has been going on for a long time, guys. It's not just a couple of dirty cops on the street. The corruption comes from the administrative staff and the command staff and the people at the top in the Marion Iowa Police Department. And just like I found this article that was buried, I'm going to keep on finding more and more articles. I'm going to keep exposing the criminal enterprise that calls themselves the Marion Iowa Police Department. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward. Welcome.
Everyone in this room knows my name and knows my address. It's Bailey, for anybody else that's listening that wants to know. I don't have much to say today, but for the record, to anyone outside of this room who may be listening, I do want to let you know what's happened since my last meeting. The city has essentially ignored me, besides one event. On January eighteenth, I became emotional as I addressed the council again regarding targeting, threats, and intimidation towards myself and others, including children in this community. My minor child also spoke bravely to this council. How many kids have done that? I expressed, expressed frustration over the council requiring me to verbally provide my home address at the meeting on January fourth in front of city employees who many others have accused of intimidation. The city continued with their normal behaviors, even though I asked them to email me when asked how I wanted to be contacted and didn't provide a mailing address. The very next day, the city allowed Mike Kitzmiller to send me a physical letter to my home address where my children live. I didn't give a mailing address. And he advised me that the tinted front window at the police department was in place to protect juvenile records. That's what it's for. Not to hide anything, to protect juvenile records. In the letter, he states that the mayor, every member of the city council, the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney were copied on this letter and aware that he was sending it. I study psychology. This is a known narcissistic tactic called mirroring, mirroring. It is when an abuser finds It is when an abuser finds out what triggers your emotions and specifically uses this to torment you. Given all of the circumstances, I receive this as an additional act of intimidation towards me. It feels like a threat. A reminder that not only does the chief know my address, the other powerful people in this city do as well. I also think that Kylie, the eighteen-year-old girl that he hired and love bombed on TV, I think you guys should look into what happened to her, because it looks like he's sending her in to, uh, do illegal arrests. And then the other problem I have is that gauge here, the youngest man on your council worked for the Gazette when this article was removed. So I hope you guys are not coercing young people that are trying to do good into doing the wrong thing. It is so disappointing, and I have never been more disappointed in so many people in my life. I hope that if you're not going to change it, I pray that someone listening does, because we are not going to be quiet. Thank you.
Anyone else address counsel?
Good evening, City Council. I too would like to express my Fourth Amendment rights. I come to you today with tens of thousands of Americans standing behind me, all of which feel precisely the same way that I do. I'm just one of hundreds of thousands of people who are watching the situation unfold, which to put into perspective is much bigger than the entire population of Marion itself. First and foremost, I want this city council and all city councils to be reminded that their perceived power and authority is derived from the consent of those governed. And I can think that I can speak for most Americans that we're sick and tired of paying our officials to not represent us or our interests. It's a shame that the corruption plagues even our small cities, but don't be fooled, many, many eyes are watching this play out. And history is showing time and again that the people will win. Most recently, was actually just last week, when a video exposing Mayor Tiffany Hayner's corruption achieved one point one million views in a single day, and the people of Dalton, Illinois voted to recall her. And if you tyrants keep it up, the Marion City Council could very well face the same level of scrutiny. I would now like to take a second to thank City Council and Mike the Cut Kitzmiller for the red light extortion cameras that were recently installed in the city of Marion. They in turn used that money to install two massive motorized gates for the Marion Police Fortress to ensure that the public is intimidated approaching their own police department. You would expect him to use some of that money to pay for some, to clean the trash that is accumulated inside the fence, but that evidently is the mentality of the Marion Police Department and the city council as a whole. You don't care. You extort the populace, you empower yourselves with that money, and then you use that power to further extort the people without even having the courtesy to keep the taxpayer facilities clean and orderly. It's simply criminal. I hope that at least some of you have the integrity to look up and understand the Constitution and the Bill of Rights to which you've sworn a sacred oath to defend. And if you haven't by now, then you just further confirm how unfit for office that you truly are. I have provided the clerk multiple copies right here, so then you guys have no excuse for, for not respecting our rights. To those of you who are guilty of dis- of disregarding your oaths, let this be your notice to cease and desist your efforts against the people effective immediately. If we, the people, don't start seeing real change soon, we will begin efforts to replace anyone who has shown that they are enemies to the people. Those of you who have seen corruption around you but remain silent are also complicit. It's your obligation and your duty to blow the whistle on corruption wherever you see it, and if you continue to refrain from doing so, then you are also the enemy. A wide array of allegations befall the city council, all of which portrays severe lack of accountability, a poor leadership structure, and a desperate need of transformation and transparency. Problems such as these stem from the top of the control structure, and in this case trickle down to even the clerks at the Marion PD. The way that we've been seeing, uh, the city of Marion's representatives treat the public is despicable and downright unacceptable. And I'm here today to tell you that it's no longer going to be tolerated. If you truly care about your constituents, your oath, and your salaries, then I implore you to make yourself known. Otherwise, I can assure you that we will replace you with someone who does. My appearance here today is not only to redress my grievances, but to demand immediate action from this city council. If there's even a shred of justice left in your hearts amongst you, then as a sign of good faith to the people of the city of Marion, I would like to call for Chief Kitzmiller to be replaced with the police chief who actually cares about his oath and the people in his city. Um, he is shown by action and even said himself that he does not care about his oath. And by doing so, he has dishonored all those who have given life and limb to defend those liberties. And I know people in here have people served in the military and who have gone through horrible things and will never be the same again. And he's spitting on it. It's unacceptable. But even more alarming is that even though he allows his subordinates to operate with the same authoritative mentality, it just furthers the gap between the people and law enforcement. And historically, if this continues, it could potentially cost the city of Marion an immense amount of money and maybe even someone their lives. The fact is, is that the city of Marion needs a police chief that respects the people's rights and that disciplines his officers instead of covering up their faults. He has displayed poor leadership traits for years and has ruined who knows how many lives. Do the people of Marion a legitimate favor and fire him. If you don't comply with this simple request, then we will be forced to further question the competency of the council as a whole. And then we'll have to take, uh, uh, take actions accordingly, where, ju- just to, so we can actually get some change. So thank you for your time.
Anyone else address counsel?
Uh, may I?
My name is Tom. I live south of Sioux City. Beyond that, I, uh, wish to, uh, express my Fourth Amendment right. Also, my First Amendment for freedom of speech, right to redress government. I'm not from here. I don't know anything about you. I just know that the corruption in this town has spread across this state verbally. Nothing I can do about it. Uh, except express to you that if you want to clean up your town, it's up to you people to do it. From what I hear, you have a corrupt chief of police. I don't know. I've never met the man. He might be the nicest guy in the world, and he might be the biggest rear end. I imagine he's somewhere in between. But I like cops. I got, I got a couple friends who used to be cops. They're retired. There are good cops out there. There are bad cops out there, and there are corrupt cops out there. Atrociously corrupt. How do you get rid of them? It's up to you, and if it's not up to, if it's not something that you're willing to do, the citizens can replace you. And then new coun- council can end up replacing him. Which is what I would suggest happen. That, uh, your reputation as a city, like I said, it stretches across the state and probably into other states nearby as well. So, I'm not going to denigrate him. I don't know him, but I've been told and heard that he's corrupt. It's up to you to take care of that situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else address counsel? Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting, move on to council comments. Sister Nat?
Excuse me, I don't have anything, but thank you.
Oh, yeah, just really quick. In, uh, twenty nineteen, I was a student at the University of Iowa and not employed by the Cedar Rapids Gazette.
Anything?
Yeah, I just, um, I want to, uh, I think it's a combination of, uh, Public Works and South Parks. Uh, both organizations taking care of a, uh, kind of an open ditch area that I saw some drive-throughs on, uh, people cutting through from one street across to Tower Terrace, and so you've remediated that. I just want to thank, uh, the crews that are, have, uh, taken care of that. Not sure if there's something else that happens on it, but, uh, I just want to say thanks for that.
Thank you all for joining us. The meeting is adjourned.